All right, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Common Council of the City of Bloomington for Wednesday, August 14th, 2024. Will the Chief Deputy Clerk please call the roll?
House Member Mary?
Here.
Here. Rallo?
Here.
Ruff?
Here.
Peter Mount Smith?
Here.
Stossberg?
Here.
Asari?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
And Daly?
Here.
Thanks. Thank you very much, and people are welcome to quietly come in and join a group while we take care of some preliminary business tonight. First of all, our land and labor acknowledgement. We recognize that the City of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people, and we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, and specifically in Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful pasts so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. So to summarize tonight's agenda, we will have an appointment to one of our committees. Then we will do an overview of the issue of unsheltered homelessness in Bloomington. We will then move to breakout groups, Part One, which is facilitated dialogue, following the issue overview sheet that you should have all received. Then we will have some time for group reporting, where we will collect different perspectives, common values, questions that arose in the groups, and possible action steps. Then we will have a second period of breakout groups, Part Two, which is deliberation practice, where we will try to synthesize priorities, values, needs, trade-offs. Then we will have a large group debriefing, and then we will close the session with acknowledgements, where to find notes from the session, and an online feedback survey. So I'd like to start with the appointment of Councilmember Rosenbarger to the Hiring Committee for the Council Attorney Administrator Position. That is an appointment made by the Council President, so I just want to make it here in this public forum. And Councilmember Rosenbarger has agreed to serve, I believe. Yes, thank you. All right, so today's topic is what actions should the City Council take to address street homelessness and support the work of others addressing street homelessness? We'll begin to discuss the complex question that I just stated from each individual's perspective. What stands out to you about the material on this outline from your own experiences? So next, we'll move to Councilmember Asari, who will give us a brief overview of unsheltered homelessness in Bloomington.
So that we can get right to what we're actually here to do, I think the important point to make here is simply that there are a lot of other conversations that are happening, and this is, so it's not taking place by itself. This is a conversation that's happening within a larger ecosystem of conversations, very usefully. Just yesterday, Heading Home, I don't see where Mary is, or Tatiana, or any of the other folks, and the Mayor and amazing Mayor's team led incredible conversations around this space, so we just wanted to anchor this conversation within that larger ecosystem of things that are happening in the space. Again, our focus, though, today is specifically on what we, as a City Council, can and should be doing, and so just the fact that this is not happening in an island, it's happening amongst all of those other conversations, but specifically focused on what this body can do. So I'll hand back over to you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Councilmember Flaherty about some, the ways in which the City Council could take action.
Thank you. So building on what Councilmember Asari just shared, the role of City Council in this challenging societal and community issue that we're grappling with and that other conversations, like the one last night that Heading Home and South Central Housing Network, I think, hosted. So the sort of main roles of the City Council are as the legislative body for the city, responsible for developing and passing city ordinances and resolutions, also budgetary. So we have the fiscal body of the city, responsible for approving budgets and other appropriations proposed by the Mayor. This conversation is meant to be generative and gathering information from folks, so I'm sharing, I'm going to share some examples of legislative or budgetary things that the Council could do and some other activities, but they aren't meant to be necessarily anchoring or the only things, but just examples. So among those, the Council could, for instance, allow and incentivize or restrict various types of housing, for example, cohousing models or single-room occupancy buildings, other types of more affordable housing units. We could legalize or restrict sleeping in public spaces, either public space at large or specific public spaces by city code. We could require or direct parks to have public restrooms that are available 24/7, 365, or some other version of that. We could have trash pickup, for instance, at encampments where unsheltered unhoused folks may be staying. We could dedicate some of the Jack Hopkins Social Service funding that the Council helps allocate specifically for agencies to hire trained street outreach workers, is another example. Some of those would, of course, have fiscal impacts and budgetary implications, but I'll share a few additional examples around the budget. So the Council could request from the Mayor to include funding in an annual budget, for instance, for a non-shelter option for those experiencing homelessness, such as a designated parking area or staffed single-room occupancy building. The Council could also engage with our colleagues from other units of government about dedicated revenue sources. The City Council is part of the Local Income Tax Council, along with the elected officials from the towns of Eldsville, Steinsville, and our colleagues on the Monroe County Council, and we collectively are responsible for setting local income tax rates, for instance. Finally, I'll note community building and convening capacities, that the Council, as role representatives of the community, could also work to bring folks together. An example would be working to bring unhoused and housed folks in a given area or neighborhood together to meet, enjoy food over a pizza party, and maybe try to disrupt some of our tendencies to other one another. So those are some examples of things that the Council could engage in. Again, not meant to be limiting, but just help get the creative juices flowing for the conversation to come. Thank you.
Oh, okay. So this is what, how will the Council follow up on today's session? So where will the notes be?
Ah, okay, so all of, everything that's generated here today, we are going to be posting, so, I mean, it's obviously, this is all being recorded, you know, and will be posted and made available. All of your participant notes will then feed into legislation that we can work on in the coming days, weeks, hopefully, hopefully days rather than weeks, no, but days, weeks, and months ahead, but we'll be posting it. Where's the space that we'll be posting it specifically?
Under, on the Council website, under Meetings and Documents. Okay. And then we also, we will not be able to really finish the deliberation process, the attempts to build consensus tonight, so there will be future meetings. Next, I'd like to introduce Jolene Bergonzi from the Community Justice and Mediation Center, who will be facilitating the rest of our meeting tonight. Welcome.
Well, in the big sense, we talked about it a lot, about what the Council wanted to do and what would be a good process for the community to practice, and so I'm just going to go over that for a minute with you. If it's possible to post the part of the handout that shows dialogue and deliberation and the group agreements, or please refer to your handout, and I'll talk about that. I'm a senior mediator and a facilitator and training consultant with the Community Justice and Mediation Center, CGM, and so we talk about a continuum of community engagement. Maybe you've seen that the Council holds public comment periods, of course, and you may meet with your Council member, you may vote, you may advocate in other ways, but tonight we're going to practice sort of this dialogue and deliberation continuum. And as you look at the difference between dialogue and deliberation, you'll see they overlap a lot, there's a lot of similar things, as well as some distinctiveness. In dialogue, we're listening to understand each other, and you'll hear a lot of that kind of affirmation going on, to make sure we understand what the different perspectives are and that people are talking about. And then if we get to the Part Two, and we have more than a minute or two left, we will practice trying to actually deliberate, which means we're going to talk about, let's pick an option, and then let's talk about what are some of the hard things we'd have to do to make this come true, and what we might have to give up. So what are, what are the trade-offs of an option, and how do we decide about it? Now, each Council member will be in a group. Some of the Council members will be taking a facilitation role in the group, but they'll also be making their own notes, because after the first part of our discussion, the Council members are going to take turns coming up here to tell you what they heard in each group. So we hope that you'll feel listened to there, and then we can all hear what has come up in the groups. And then in each group will be a person from the Community Justice and Mediation Center, my colleagues, and if they'll stand now, I'll just tell you who they are. We have Susan Klein, Susan is over there, and we have Vanessa Roberts, who is here, and we have John Vander Zee in this group, and we have myself, and we have Wilson, who is, Moseley, who is here, and we have Ed Greenbaum, who is here. And we'll be co-facilitating in the group, and because we haven't had a chance to train the Council members in facilitation, please go easy on them, but we will also help them. We will be, you might see us helping them as co-facilitators, which is fine, they have not had that experience, per se, and we'll just give them an assist if needed. But we'll start in this room for Groups One, Two, and Three. If you have trouble moving, or it would take you a while to move out into the hall, you might want to choose to sit in Groups One, Two, or Three, because those groups will stay here throughout. Groups Four, Five, and Six are going to be moving out into the atrium, because if we were all talking in here, there's no way we could hear each other. So we're going to move three groups out there, and then we'll come back in for the midway reporting, and we'll then go back out for the second part, and come back in for the large group debriefing. So if you're okay with moving back and forth, take a seat in Groups Four, Five, and Six. I'm going to quickly go over the group agreements and ask you if you agree to them. If you do not, if you feel uncomfortable with these group agreements and choose not to participate in the dialogue, that is totally fine. We have an open space area here in the chambers, you can take a seat in these chairs back here, and you can talk together, you can listen and observe whatever you wish. All right, the group agreements to support constructive conversation, so that everybody feels supported. We, again, are trying to understand different perspectives, and we don't want anyone to feel shut down. Everyone's the expert on their own perspective, so please be honest and respectful. We're listening to understand each other, again. Stay engaged as much as you can, yes, we all zone out sometimes, but stay engaged as much as you can. It's okay to disagree, totally okay, say, you know, I just, I would never support that, I can't get behind that for this reason. It's okay to do that with curiosity, not hostility, and you might want to ask others for clarification, could you tell me more about what you mean by that? And lastly, always a struggle, be concise so everyone can speak, and we want everyone to have a chance in the groups to speak, and so we'll ask you to help facilitate that. And again, if you, if you would not want to do these agreements, please take a seat in the back, but if you would and would like to participate in this dialogue practice with us, please raise your hand that you agree to these agreements. Thank you so much. And now we're going to start the first dialogue group on the questions that will be displayed here and repeated in your small groups. I'm going to ask those seated in Areas Four, Five, and Six to go into the atrium to find your group, and ask the Council members to take their place in their groups. Thank you. I'd like to invite everybody to assemble in the large group for the reporting from the Council members. I'm going to ask the Council members to come up from each group for their reporting. Let's start with Group One. Group One to the podium, and then we'll go Two, Three, Four, et cetera.
Thank you, everyone. If we could please find a seat or a corner to stand in, if you like. We're going to, we're going to report out from each of the groups. Jolene, how much time do I have? Like, what is, two to three minutes each? Is that about right? Okay, y'all, please quiet down, we'll have more time to chat with one another in, in 20 minutes or so. All right. Welcome back, thank you for being here. I'm Matt Flaherty, At-Large City Council member, I was the facilitator in Group One over in the corner. We had, I think, a really generative conversation and productive. We followed the prompts in the, roughly in the times allocated, so in the first one, I'm going to try to draw out common themes, things we heard. Folks acknowledge that compared to others, we have a lot of resources in this community, which is both a good thing and sometimes maybe a challenge, concerns about folks from other counties coming here because of the lack of services there, wide acknowledgement that this is a very complex and difficult problem, generally speaking, concerns about safety and security for individuals, for people experiencing homelessness, for businesses, definitely concerns about the lack of basic needs and services available, in particular, trash, bathrooms, and how that can be dehumanizing for folks experiencing homelessness. We dug a little bit into the concept of what does it mean to be from here? If you are residing here, are you from here? How long do you need to be here? We talked about challenges of misalignment between the services that are available and what people's needs might be, in particular, the rules that folks might have a hard time following, not the right gender for the resource, having pets, et cetera, as well as concerns about policies of clearing or sweeping camps when no alternatives exist for folks, and potential spillovers related to displacing people into areas where it may be more difficult to continue case management, or in other more visible areas downtown or elsewhere. Those were the main things from the personal perspective experience, Part One. Part Two, I think widespread agreement that we need to be working together, ideally working in the same direction, that's true across units of government, city, county, state, as well as some discussion of public-private and philanthropic entities aligning, including potentially with respect to funding, matching, and all contributing. I think there was a recognition that we need more resources, but an aversion to making new resources, and so it's about reallocating existing money was one consideration, or making better use of funds we have. Again, major theme that emerged was the basic needs, trash and bathrooms, priority number one, several folks nodded in agreement to that, also storage for belongings. Safe sleeping came up as an item of conversation, having designated land or designated space where folks who are unwilling or unable to go to shelter could spend the night in camp, probably some level of rules and even provision of tents or sleeping bags, but really back to the basic needs, bathroom, trash, storage, safe sleeping spaces. I think I'll stop there, that was, oh, no one-size-fits-all solution, no single solution here, that was the other thing, thank you.
Yay, yay! Okay, fasten your seatbelt, we did a lot! Hello, everyone! In terms of question one, I think there's really three, and if I don't represent you well, everyone, like, holler at me or something, but, three key points. The first one, everybody acknowledged the significant pressures on the, on all of our resources, on, on our community just generally, and this is a concern that we all had. We talked, though, most importantly, about the humanity of those experiencing homelessness, and most importantly, about our responsibility as a city. Someone said, I think, the clearest way of sort of summarizing our sentiments around point one was that in Bloomington, we should not accept having this happen, like, this is a problem that we should solve, and that we actually believe that it is solvable. In terms of what priorities for action we'd recommend for Council, this is just in the order roughly that they came up, we said that we need to be focusing on workforce and skill development, so thinking about ways to help, sort of, help people who are experiencing homelessness find jobs and skills and upskilling, et cetera, organizing the city government to deal specifically with homelessness, so we spoke about the need to centralize our resources, everything from the way that we budget to the way that we're staffed, et cetera, to not just spread what we talked about, the sort of resources very thin across multiple departments, but thinking about perhaps having a centralized approach to how we deal with this. We talked a lot about data, thinking specifically about funding for, capacity for, and then the city's help in sharing data amongst the broader ecosystem and in the city broadly. We talked about public facilities, the needs for things like bathrooms, showers, lockers. We talked about, I cannot read my own handwriting, I am sorry, we talked about the need for ecosystem support, so what the city can be doing as a convener to make sure that we're sort of making all of the different parts work well together. I am just reading back here, even though I can't read my housing well. We talked about the importance of housing, rapid rehousing, and temporary housing specifically. We talked a lot about the need for us to be utilizing groups, the sort of coalition of the willing, to do all of the things listed above. We talked about the structure of grants in the city, and how many of those are difficult to access for smaller organizations trying to address homelessness. We talked about responsiveness amongst City Council members, we talked about transportation, zoning, incentives around Section Eight, particularly around, thinking around how we can help to rapidly help people who have Section Eight vouchers. We talked about funding for models like eco-housing and transitional housing, funding for social workers to improve their salaries, to create incentives for hiring, talked about income support, and we talked about single occupancy rooms and houses. I hope that was everything, did I cover everything? All right, woo, let's go, Group Three!
I'll do my best to go slow and go fast, all at the same time. I'm Hoppy Stossberg, I'm the Council Three, or Council District Three representative, representing Group Three, that actually worked out nicely, good coordination there. So I also have extensive notes, and I'm going to try not to go through every single piece, because that would take a really long time, and I'm going to hope that I don't forget anything important, and I would really invite Group Three to yell out if I forget something that's super important to you. I really enjoyed our group over there tonight, I feel like we had a really, kind of diverse set of individuals who had some personal experience working with, with unsheltered folks, and also some that are very personally impacted in terms of living very close to Shalom Center, very close to other areas, including the parks where, where our unhoused neighbors hang out a lot. So, things that brought them here, they really want to reduce homelessness as a problem, that that is a driving factor, that is an urgent matter, that there is a danger to the public and a danger to the community themselves, that it's a public safety issue and concern, especially for medical fragile, medically fragile individuals. Some folks just wanted to learn more about the situation, and I'm going through my notes a little bit here, that the last year has had a dramatic increase in street homelessness, and that's one of the things that brought some folks here tonight in our group. And also that was mentioned was the mental health issues that can lead to safety issues and some personal experiences people in our group had, encountering homeless people who were exhibiting mental health concerns, and then it became a safety issue. And I think that that's probably most of what answers question one. In terms of actual solutions, we talked about a few different types of solutions, we also liked trash pickup and the idea of trash pickup, but there's also the unintended consequence of that, and how do you actually, you know, there's some practical considerations to deal with. Similarly, with bathrooms, that, you know, it would be nice to have restrooms open more broadly at some of our public parks, but then there's maybe some unintended consequences of that, too, which kind of edged into some security concerns, which I kind of heard a couple people mention a little bit off to the side, so that's generally an issue. There was generally that, that kind of sentiment, like, we can do some things, like maybe increase lighting or increase security, but that might just drive people out to other places, and so it's not necessarily effective to think about punitive measures all the time, even though they're tempting, because that just moves people around, and that that's not necessarily an effective way to totally solve the problem. So I think that's in terms of legislative and what Council can do, trying to meet that line of something that actually solves the problem without just moving the problem to a new place, and that is a challenge. There's a specific thought to increase street outreach teams in one way or another, and we also, I think there was general thought and agreement about the idea of changing the UDO, of expanding different housing types, especially thinking about group housing, especially thinking about single occupancy rooms, and some of those ideas, some cohousing models, and there was also the sentiment to, well, there was not consensus amongst our group in this, there was a sentiment by some to restrict sleeping in public places more, and a sentiment by others to specifically allow public sleeping in certain areas, and I'm not sure how to compromise those two positions at this point. And then we also had kind of an extended conversation toward the end about ways to incentivize landlords in different ways, in terms of the landlord mitigation fund, in terms of assistance with rental application fees, which can be a really big barrier, and, oh, and we also talked about different work programs and offering day labor options, and how to potentially expand, right now there's a public works program that works with Centerstone, potentially expand that to other places, and expand that to more of a day labor job opportunity. that to other places, and expand that to more of a day labor job opportunity. Oh, and the last thing, which I think is important, was the idea of improving communication between the resources that we do have, which everybody agreed was a lot, and residents, so that if a resident were, say, to stumble across somebody camping, or somebody, an unhoused person who is having a problem, that there's a, like, who do they call? They don't necessarily need a police response, they don't want a punitive response, but clearly this person needs help. And so in improving the community understanding about what to do in that situation. So I think that's it. Did I forget anything big? I don't see any hands. Thank you very much. Group four.
Thank you. I want to point out that you may have noticed in this last report, there was a lot of deliberation that went on. It wasn't just the dialogue and the highlights of different priorities. That group really started to struggle with what would happen if we wanted to make that happen. And so that'll be our next group discussion, but I just wanted to see if you noticed that. Group four.
Hi, I'm Andy Ruff. I'm an at-large member of the common council. And, I mean, I'm not going to be as organized as some of the folks who've already spoken, but I would emphasize to start off that there was a widespread agreed emphasis on our group at a very fundamental level, that to have success in whatever approaches that are taken to this, to address this issue, that to start any step in the process from a perspective of dignity and respect for those experiencing homelessness, and to make it clear that they matter, and that their input is taken, fundamentally taken seriously and upfront, regardless of what step or what approach is being taken. That was, we had widespread agreement on that. Then, the affordable housing, just prioritizing policies in any way the council can, any way the city can, towards affordability of housing, though it was brought up by someone in our group that, the perspective that with all the mental health and addiction issues, just providing housing opportunities isn't necessarily going to address a critical mass of the problem. Then, and that there are not enough addiction and mental health services, even close. That was a consensus, or it was strongly felt in the group. The idea of learning from other communities and not reinventing the wheel was brought up, that there are a lot of things we can learn from other places. I don't know much about other places. Someone mentioned, in our group, mentioned some approaches Austin, Texas has taken, someone mentioned Atlanta, Georgia, but that there are lessons, those communities are, communities are all different, but there are things that we really should be looking into really hard at learning from other places. And then, this came up several times, was the feeling, there was a feeling amongst the group that Indiana University is not involved enough, not contributing enough, not doing enough, not contributing their resources, and their people, and their ideas, and funds even, and that that is going to be, that needs to change. And that people think it will change, or it should change, because the well-being of Bloomington, the well-being of IU is very closely connected to the well-being of Bloomington. And finally, the idea that there needs to be increased, the role of convening, the council's potential power to, or ability to convene, that it's going to take IU, the county, the state, and even federal resources, and along with the not-for-profits here, the social service agencies, to really get better about coming together into a more of a central, centralized, collaborative, coordinated approach. So that was what we had from group four.
Woo, group four!
My name is Sydney Zulik. I was the leader of group five, not group six, like my district, but that's okay. So I'm going to talk in themes. I think a lot of people covered a lot of great stuff that we also talked about, so I'm just going to go over some big overlays that we talked about. In the first half of our discussion, we talked about all the different problems that we're currently facing, and one of the biggest things was support for people in different transition periods in their life. So that could be right before they hit the point where they're street homeless, that could be right after they've hit the point where they're street homeless, and the third would be after they've received some type of supportive housing or transitional housing, and how we're supporting people in big transitional points of their life. Other problems that people are experiencing is discrimination for qualifying for housing programs, access to doctors, and then mental health and addiction services. So that was part one. Part two, we talked a lot about how the UDO currently has a lot of restrictions that make it difficult to develop more supportive housing for people who aren't related, so putting maybe 10 people in a house at the same time who can support each other on their journey. We talked a little bit about kind of implementation of, so I think we did skip a little bit into deliberation, but we talked about how implementation of different services, like perhaps requiring trash pickup at encampments, is not always the best solution in implementation, even though it sounds great in legislative mindset. And then, the final thing that we talked about is just increasing funding and people for the programs that are already in place. We don't need a new department, we just need to support the departments and the organizations that are currently in place, and one of the ways city council can do that is through the Jack Hopkins Committee. Thank you.
I feel like I have to run to get up here. Hi, I'm Courtney Daly. I am representative for district five on city council, so I feel like council members look, and I should have switched, because I facilitated group six. And before I get into what we talked about, I just want to say a huge thank you to everybody for being here tonight. I am blown away by how many people are here, so I could tear up over that. But I had a really great group. We had a lot of different representation. We had people who work in some services who were there, people who just were here because they wanted to learn, and some people who could bring us their personal experiences being housed in Wheeler Mission, which was invaluable. So when we talked about question number one, some of the things that stood out was that we have robust service in our community, but the focus right now is on getting people housed, there's not enough low-income housing, or enough shelter. One huge concern among many of the people in the group is that we really lack in women's shelters, and that really concerned them, that there's not enough helping the women in Bloomington who are on our streets. One question that came up is where do people want to go? What do they want? We need to get that information from them and be really thoughtful about finding, you know, what solutions they care about, because they may not be looking for housing. We talked about stigmatization, we want to make sure that we're not leaning into that at all, and that we're trying to really help get away from that, and to be very compassionate and empathetic, and honor people's choices in what they're looking for. You know, one of the things that was emphasized is that, you know, people who are unhoused, they had regular lives once upon a time, and that we need to be very mindful of that. Bloomington doesn't have housing ready for people who have been in encampments for a long time, so what they need looks very different than what many other people need when they're looking for housing. We do a good job of helping to get them off the streets, but not keeping them in housing. They have a different skill set, and we're setting them up for failure if they're not well-supported once we get them into housing. Moving people from encampments can re-traumatize them. They've built up some relationships and some trust, especially with service workers, and once they get moved, they are re-traumatized all over again, and a lot of times, they lose their trust in the people that they have been working with. I'm trying to read my notes and not repeat myself. Animal ownership, staying together as a couple, these are barriers for people getting into shelter, so, you know, again, like I talked about, you know, the concern being getting women in, you know, more shelter, for women's shelters, just being a broad range of needs, addressing a lot of different ways to do that. Life change starts with housing. You can't do much without a foundation. So when we talked about second question, one of the first things that came up was, for example, getting things in place like a detox center, and then this goes back to what we talked about with the life change starting with housing. If somebody needs to go into detox, then we're setting them up for failure, again, if they're just going right back out on the streets, so we need something long-term and sustainable for that. Somebody mentioned that they're interested in zoning reform to facilitate more and denser housing with transportation, and changing things like landscaping requirements to make it easier and more affordable for ownership. We had, we again, we did veer a little bit into the deliberation portion, because there was a lot of back and forth regarding legalizing sleeping in designated areas, a lot of big feelings on both sides of that, and it sounds like that was pretty common across the board. But very good points, you know, were brought up on all sides, you know, this also, we then veered into discussion on water, restrooms, trash pickup, we need a better plan for all of that. We discussed single-room occupancy hotels, maybe a place for a person that they can rent at a very low cost, can be something with a shared bathroom, just four walls, where they can sleep at night and have a place to put their things, and that they can kind of call their safe space, their private space, more storage facilities. Getting more info from, you know, a marginalized group, to have more information to help us make very targeted and specific decisions, not looking for a broad solution, building bigger and better support systems, right? So more street outreach, additional street outreach. How many would this be? We're talking maybe 20, ideally 50, you know, as many as possible, and then also caseworkers, too, same thing, just raising those numbers dramatically, and working, you know, in terms of health, housing, so on and so forth. Thank you.
I hope you're all energized for a quick part two.
Yes, we are.
Okay, great. We have less than 20 minutes for this second part, and what we're going to focus on, hopefully the questions will be up there, we need to choose one possible step, one action step that you would like to recommend to the council, and when you're thinking about that, what would it take to do that? How does it support our needs and our values? And what are the trade-offs? What might we have to give up to be able to address that issue? Okay, see you back here in about 15, 17 minutes. If anyone would like to talk in these final two minutes, we're going to have a group debriefing, a large group debriefing, as an example of how we usually end these kinds of events. And my colleague, Liz Grenat, has a microphone to pass along when people would like to speak, so please raise your hand if you want to speak, but I'm going to pose some questions. So we're going to think now a minute, reflect on how this went. We practiced dialogue. I think most of you got a practice of what it was like to listen to other people's perspectives, and to be listened to and heard by people who could make decisions in a greater context. So now I'm just going to ask you, what it was like for you? What did you notice? What stood out about this process to you? Just raise your hand, Liz will bring you the mic.
Something I found in my group is a lot harder to come up with an action step than it was to come up with problems and ideas.
It was harder to come up with an action step, but you could think of the problems really easily with, yeah. What else did you notice? What did it feel like for you?
I just really appreciated the direction to listen for understanding, and I think it really influenced the process the whole way, where people are being a little more open-minded and listening, not needing to, you know, be contentious, but just share even conflicting ideas.
So you noticed a lot of people being more willing to listen to other perspectives, and then share their own?
Oh, I just wanted to say, I heard, well, there were a lot of new ideas, I also heard a lot of the same themes and ideas from the Community Safety Town Hall that CAPS Commission held two years ago, and I know CAPS Commission and the members here, we're very happy to see the council taking leadership on this, this issue, and I hope that the fact that they are taking leadership on it means we will have some action items and steps being taken from these themes, which I think our community is clearly in consensus on what the major problems are and some of the major solutions.
Two more comments.
I hope that at the end of all this discussion and towards the beginning of some action, that there is a list of jobs that need to be done for people in the wings, like myself, that are volunteers out there, that are very interested in this. And I'm not sure who would be responsible to generate that list, but I look forward to seeing it at some point, okay?
Okay, and I hope if people are interested in further contacts about this, that you put your email so you can receive messages. Go ahead, sir, sorry.
I think there's still a lot of, basically, mental impediments that people have to considering and accepting more outside-of-the-box ideas that are outside of sort of tried models or established practices, thinking about just expanding sort of existing things rather than taking a leap into it a different direction. And I think it would be, if there's a way for people to network after this, everybody that signed up out here, to create some sub-working groups that may operate at a different goal set than what the overall consensus is, that would be great.
Okay, and we are so appreciative, not only of you all for participating, but the council members had to step outside their comfort zone, and I really thank them, too. And I also want to put in a plug, because if you're very interested in conflict resolution, communication strategies, restorative justice, see our website, cjamcenter.org, because we have a training coming up in September. And there will be a survey for this event, where you can put your ideas down, what went well for you, what would you hope is different in the future, et cetera. And Isabel? Yeah? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Jolene Bergonzi and Liz Grenat, for your invaluable help, and all of the co-facilitators from CJAM, and thank you all for coming out and spending two hours with us on this very difficult issue, and sharing your insights and your ideas. It's extremely valuable to us, and I'm very appreciative. We encourage your feedback. This funny square is one of those QR codes that you can scan, and there's just a very short, three-question feedback form we would love you to fill out. There are also a few, I think, hard copies on the table, oh, wait, do we have them at the clerk's table? We have some hard copies of the little survey at the clerk's table, if you prefer to do it that way, and be sure to not just take it, but actually fill it out and leave it for us. Thank you. And once again, we will compile the notes from this session, and you may have seen, while Jolene was speaking a few minutes ago, we did have people who were participating via Zoom share some ideas and do some of the exercises via Zoom chat, so we will add those notes as well, and we will have those on the city council website under Meetings and Documents. And if you've left your email when you signed in, we'll also email you when those are ready, so you can see that. So once again, thank you so much, and we'll hope to engage with you more on this topic as we move forward.
Okay. [applause][1776.19] [applause][1730.53]